Regular meeting of the Swansea Board of Selectmen today, December 28th is called to order.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 21st.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Do you think you had, Michael?
No.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Public input, we have anybody on line? Who'd like to take advantage of this five minutes?
It's only me, secretary, recording.
Thanks, Beverly.
You're welcome.
This is Michael York, Beverly.
Okay.
Hi, Beau.
Hi, Mike.
Um, Mike is aware of this, we're gonna have to put a warrant out if we're gonna reauthorize the pledge script. If we don't reauthorize it at the level that the town has authorized it passed, it reverts back to 50 watts.
Isn't that on the warrant?
Yes, yep. We have, we have.
Hey, Mike, I can't hear you with your back to the, to the camera and the, and the speaker.
I'm sorry, Beau. I just wanna make sure that this letter will also recommend this to the voters. That's all. If you're aware, we're gonna get it done. It means a lot to a lot of the veterans in town.
Sure.
So regarding the reauthorization of Veterans Credit Beverly, which is. I don't know, the number is 11 and 12, I think.
Those are a couple of them.
Yeah.
Did you get a cha-? Michael, did you get a chance to look at the proposed warrant articles?
No, I have not.
Okay, can you, do you have a copy, can we give him a copy?
I do not have an extra copy, but we can give him one. Actually, we can give him, we got the packet that I printed for Beverly, we're getting it from here.
Just take a look at the, Michael thinks they're 11 and 12. Make sure they meet with your expectations. Where, where's Pete?
I don't know, I said he'd be able to come.
He's a smart man, he deputized, deputized Mr. York.
Yeah. Thanks, Michael, ta- take a look at those letters now before the end of the meeting, or check with Michael.
Nine and 10, articles nine and 10.
Oh, we were close.
You were close.
I knew it wasn't 37 and 38, see, shorter this year, boss.
There you go. You'll do just fine. It's the, uh. It's, it's the. Well, you have an opportunity right now. Planning board. You're, you're up.
I don't know.
So we're here to talk about a couple items we can consider to help Ashley be all that she can be in her position. And two things that have been kinda lacking as the position has developed from very part-time and kinda semi-volunteer to where we're hopefully going as the, getting close to the full-time status for next year. So two things, one, some dedicated space office storage, she's talking about struggling to find a warm place to store basketballs versus her basement or part of her house, so. We've kind of identified the, the small room and we can haul here, which does get some use, but I think for the amount of use, I think it's something we can, we can work around, I know Jenna has an event and I think mid-January that she'd already kind of told the folks that they could use, but, so we'd be kinda looking at. But at least if it's gonna be kind of locked off and more secured after that point. The committee's aware of it, they'd kinda heard about it through the grapevine, I think Pete just mentioned, you know, some of the furniture in there probably isn't as appropriate for the, you know, office setting, I know you like the clock, but.
Oh, it's my favorite.
Drive you crazy in there, so. So that's my item, and then the other one which came up kind of.
So while you're on that, what would be the perp- what would, what would you, how would you use it?
So currently I work from my dining room table. And we have a dining room set that seats eight, and only two seats are available for my kids, cuz everything else from the last two years has kind of accumulated at my house. On top of kind of taking over my basement when we need to move equipment around and. It was very hard wrapping Christmas presents this year. With very limited space, with basketballs, just trying to make sure they can get inflated to the right pressure. I can't really store them then outside in a cold storage space. Making sure too, I also, when I do store stuff like Carpenter Home, I can access it when I'm not interrupting that time or things like that, when they're really trying not to have people at that location as well.
Employee interviews are kind of subject to availability of semi, not even private, but it's dedicated space in Town Hall and.
I'd really relate a lot to Zoom for any type of meeting, cuz it's usually from my dining room table or I'm traveling to their location to meet with them.
So you would use it strictly as an office?
Yeah, it would be great to have designated storage, designated filing. I think that would improve a lot of my, um, storage and organization, a lot of times, like, so I host Thanksgiving. Everything got packed up, how to get put away, everything done, how to get unpacked and reorganized. And just that time is just a lot of extra time, we have a lot of stuff that's gotta move from place to place.
Which small room are we talking?
The corner room.
Oh, okay. Is the basement here suitable for storage? Sporting equipment?
Well, yeah, I guess maybe for the basketball.
Jenna did offer like the basement, but Ann said it's really hard to get into, I personally have never seen the basement, so I'm not quite sure really where.
Happy to give you a tour, but.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that might solve the basketball storage issue.
Well, yeah, and it's only really during the season, so like I had to get them someplace that I can inflate them, for one. That was a big issue of accessing an air compressor, which conveniently my husband has one. So it's taking them to my house, inflating them all, and now keeping them in a place before I'm gonna hand them over to coaches to kind of keep their pressure, so I have to keep inflating them. Currently, all the soccer balls are stored at Pine Street, but again, I'll play that same game with moving them all to my house, inflating them all, taking them where I need to. As the programs grows, it's getting harder, we have 71 kids registered for basketball this year, we only had 53 last year. Yeah, we have a whole second team, or a whole, well, we're up to five teams now for the league, we're up to 24 kids. I brought in another coach to help with the skills and drills. And soccer this year reached 187 kids, which again was another record number a year. So the more kids we keep bringing in, the more it's, and I don't have a very big basement. And we run our wood stove in the winter, that's our main heat source and. It takes up a lot of space.
So we'll look into the basement?
For the storage.
For storage?
Yeah.
All right.
And there's an office up here on the upper, on the right too, right?
Yeah, so that's.
Pretty much.
Yeah, correct, it's kind of been identified as like a caterer's prep space, but it's, it could be pretty available and it's kind of filled the use that that side room has gotten, I think.
That's why I asked.
Right, it's a good question.
I'm pretty much open to any space that just isn't.
We tried the Carpenter Home, especially when that was vacant, but the spirits weren't agreeing with you in there, and then by the time it would get heated up, she was ready to leave, or so. And now, obviously, a lot of it's occupied, so.
Yes, and if there was a back room, now that we've relocated. Like, I, I'm open to any space, it's just, it's really taking a toll on my family, how this has to be taken over.
Sure. Is there any space in the sprinkler storage room available at the, at Carpenter?
The barn.
For the basketballs, you're saying?
Is upstairs available, or we're on the.
Still think it's heated.
It is, when you walk in that front door, cuz you walk into the stairwell that goes up above, like that big door that holds all that boiler stuff.
Oh, I thought you meant upstairs in the main building.
No, no, yeah, no, that height.
I think we have tried, we've worked very hard to get a lot of junk out of there.
Yes, that again is not a place I'm interested in making out.
But that is because she could access the barn from the outside and not bother the.
Right.
Well, that's what we do right now, cuz we use that back room to store a lot of stuff that needs, like our paint, that's a big thing from summer camp, I have a whole ton of paint, it can't get stored in the winter. It freezes, it explodes, or it becomes bad, same thing with glue and tape, all of that stuff usually has to get left out of camp so that we can maintain a supply and not have to throw it all away and get new stuff.
So the, the appeal is for that room as a designated office?
Right.
Lockable?
Right.
What's number two?
Uh, number two is, um, earlier this year when the police, police department had traded, uh, shifted over a cruiser, he's gonna go to the sewer commission, when we thought we were hiring a new employee, but we've gone contracted route, so they don't, they don't need that cruiser. And Ashley was talking, again, partly just driving around a bag full of basketballs in her, were the tourists or.
Live a corolla.
Corolla.
With car seats in the back.
So she's at the mercy of if her, if her aging SUV is functional and.
Yes, we have a Suburban that we did purchase, kind of made, we come in to take this job, getting kids to and from summer camp, and then also carting soccer balls and things like that. Yeah, it's not as reliable as it was gonna be. Leaving some gaps and work gaps or, it's like, it's all at this point right now. I was lucky that I was able to get it running yesterday, so I could cart supplies from Carpenter Home to here to run the programs, just cuz we weren't able to store stuff here before Christmas, uh, cuz we weren't having a designated spot for anything and a lot that couldn't go into the carriage barn, cuz it could freeze. I had a lot of door handles that froze open and there was just some.
So what, what is the question?
A vehicle or something that I would be able to cart stuff.
Kind of more assigned to, she was using, you know, in the summer, you were, one season going to pick up lunches and that sort of stuff, so just, she's got a good amount of around-town driving that we think would be beneficial to.
Yeah. All right with that? All right?
Big question I kind of have too, though, I don't know if that's has to go through liability or crime acts.
Crime acts, I'd definitely probably say no, but we can check with our lawyer about, basically just if she's got her kids.
Car seats or things like that.
And that sort of stuff, so. We can work out those logistics and. As long, I didn't wanna get too, didn't wanna spend money on legal advice if it wasn't something.
So.
Yep. Anything else, you're on a roll.
Well, any question, I know I'm extremely sorry I missed last week, it was kind of a very event for my, for my family. Um, but any questions about budget or things for next year? Our schools out program is slowly growing, but I'm really hoping that the more we can provide consistent care for parents, the more they'll start turning and relying to us, and we're continually having registration open for walk-in, so. Parents are literally had a kid come at noon today, but just thought we were having too much fun, went across the street and they paid for the full payment, came in and hung out with us and made it through the calendar. So hopefully we can continue doing that and expanding.
You have adequate staff?
Yeah, I, and to think of a really good way to keep my summer camp staff and types to continue staying employed with us and stick around for the summer because we're providing them an opportunity to come in when they're home from college. So I have one that's home particularly right now, and she's out of state for college, so it was great for her to come home anyway. I could come do this and make a paycheck before I had to go back and things like that.
Great, how many children?
We had eight today, or seven, seven today, and my two went home. Um, but we have 11 scheduled for tomorrow and 11 scheduled for Friday, and I'm really hoping to continue to grow with it. I literally had one registered right as we were about to start, so hopefully the more the word gets out, the more the friends will wanna come in, and I have my computer here to provide registration if anyone does wanna walk in the day of the event.
Good job.
I'm trying, we're gonna try to push it to the schools more, and I think that's a big thing too, is just getting it out to the schools and getting it out early enough that parents have an opportunity, if they don't have already planned daycare, they could have an option.
And then another item that came up, um, that you and I haven't had a chance to connect on, but was just trying to develop some more senior programs for next year.
I'm trying to work with the YMCA and bring in some like better balance programs, some silver sneakers programs and things like that, that can really trigger or target an older audience that we really don't have a market to.
You don't wanna trigger the older audience.
And, and hopefully I might, uh, we're looking to kind of partner with Beyond the Belt, potentially maybe offer a, um, program for middle schoolers as well. I spent a time chatting with her, we're gonna talk more on Tuesday.
What's Beyond the Belt?
It's the after-school and summer camp program that is granted through Title I at the schools.
Bell, B E L.
Oh, Bell.
Yeah. Goes like that after-school program that the kids can go through at the elementary school, they've just opened a program up for middle schoolers as well, in different club settings, to try to offer later days for the kids that may not be able to have a parent at home right at 2:30 when they get out of school.
Okay. Can I think? Any questions?
No.
You're doing one hell of a job, keep it up.
I am trying, I'm having fun doing it. I don't know if anyone saw our photos, we did just dance this morning, and I'm kind of a little out of touch. You can just load YouTube videos and everyone just lines up and dances, you don't feel like a wee anymore, like when I was little. And the kids had so much fun, we spent literally an hour just dancing. And then they did karaoke, these kids are really good at singing.
Well, they have a good teacher.
Not singing.
No, I don't, I didn't sing, trust me. How long, you should see my leg go.
Thanks, Ashley.
You're welcome, guys.
Thank you.
Mike, how are ya?
All right, so.
If you could join us up here, Mike, for both, uh, so Josh doesn't have to do, uh, too many gyrations.
Okay, so I'll start with what we got done this year, and you should have the report, draft report that we have together. It's draft, cuz our meeting is until next week, so I don't have to prove it yet. And then I'll go over what our plans are for 2023, and then we can talk about the budget. So this year, um, got quite a bit done, so on the Cheshire Trail, so that's the trail that runs on the east side of Swansea, from Jaws and Station Road all the way down, and we get to Web Depot Road, which actually goes into Marlborough a little bit. But we got that all mowed a couple times, once in the spring, once in the fall, to keep that clear. Uh, we did the same on the Ashweelot Trail, so that's the trail that runs through West Swansea here, down to Winchester. We really did that also mowed, and, you know, debris cleared a couple times, uh, this year as well. And it's all because we have a couple volunteers that volunteer their equipment. So we reimburse them for fuel, and if they gave us their equipment, we help them fix as well, so. It encourages them to keep volunteering, which stretches the dollars a lot farther than hiring a contractor. Uh, any trees that fall, we get those cleared out as well, and that happens, like just all this wind we had the other day, there were a couple trees on the Cheshire Trail that I cleared out, so to try to keep the trail clear. If you remember, we had a grant last year where we did a lot of ditch clearing, uh, which got a lot of ditches working again well. Then the leaves fall, so now we, we're trying to keep ahead of that. So we did a mile between Jaws and Station Road and Mount Huggins to keep all the leaves out of the ditches, so water didn't come back on the trail surface, so we did that maintenance as well. On the Cheshire Trail, and then on the Ashweelot Trail, uh, near the, um, middle Matthews Road crossing, there's a culvert there that can clog up, we got that cleared out. And then the north crossing, which is just a little bit north of that, it's a, there's a lot of brush that grows and the line of sight with the cars can be dangerous cuz of the angles, so we got that cleared, and then Joe came out with his crew and also helped with some of the high stuff, so we got all that cleared out as well.
Is there anything else that could be done at that? It's, it's surprising to me how many people I see that are waiting to go north, cuz they can't see.
Right.
Back.
Uh, we are talking about getting some crossings put in there, and the flashing type. So when a, a trail user approaches, the cars will have a flashing light that, or flashing sign that will occur before they get to the, the blind spot kind of thing, so that's the. Trail committee's been talking about that, we've been in discussions with Mike about that, to try to get those installed to reduce the risk of, you know, an accident. Uh, we, we also rented an excavator, uh, through our, our budget for a week this past fall, and we worked on the southern part of the Ashweelot Trail from the Swansea Winchester town line going north up to the north Holbrook, almost to the north Holbrook crossing. Again, clearing ditches, cuz that gets really wet in through there, cuz it's low lying, so we did a lot of ditch clearing, culvert clearing. Did some mowing, we were trying to do canopy mowing, but the mower we rented failed after the second day. That, but one of the volunteers came out with his trail brush hog, and we, we brushed all the way to Pine Street and back and did all that, which was great. So that was really help, and it made a huge difference. Like, I was clearing part of a ditch, threw a puddle in the trail, three hours later, look back and the puddle was gone. It was just amazing, if you just keep the water off the trail, how much better it is. We made a little bit of progress on the tap grant, if you recall, we have this tap grant that's like going on forever, and it continues. As far as getting the engineering study approved, and we also, um, there was a scope, and there's a scope of service document that was provided by Hoyle Tanner, which is the engineering firm, which we all reviewed and sent back comment, and they forwarded to the state, and now we wait again. So that's where we are on that.
We're also waiting on, from Hoyle Tanner, the budget figures for the, um, the total cost.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Part of the next phase too.
Yeah. Uh, we submitted for another RTP grant, this is a Recreation of Trails Program grant, which we got awarded. It wasn't the full amount, but it's enough where we'll be able to continue to do work primarily on Ashweelot Trail, where the plan is for that. I attend the, um, Wantasket Minatnoch Trail Coalition, so that's a, that's a coalition that manages the hiking trail from Mount Wantasket, which is in Hinsdale, to Mount Minatnoch, it's a 50-mile hiking trail, and it goes through Swansea. And it uses the Cheshire Trail, uh, through Swansea, so that's why I joined, because we're kind of part of that. So I just attended the meeting to keep up with that kind of stuff. Also, the Minatnoch Region Railroad Collaborative, which I'm a part of, which is a group looking at the rail trails through the whole Minatnoch region, so we're tied really closely into that and what's happening there. And the goal of that group is to fix all the rail trails in the region connecting with Winchton, Brattleboro, and Bellows Falls. So, just keep in touch with that. And then we also continue to provide, provide brochures for local businesses. We have a few, uh, brochure holders on kiosks on the trail, we keep those stocked, and they keep going, so people are using them and looking at them. So that's pretty much what happened this year, any questions, um, what we got done?
It's, it's amazing to me how much you got done.
Thanks.
Tremendous.
Well, you know, we gotta get a set of volunteers, and people wanna do the work, and, you know, we just kind of stay on top of it and, you know, slowly, you know, working it and making it better, so.
Is there more that we could do to, to help?
Uh, well, yeah, the budget, which we'll go to in a second. So let me talk about what we plan to do in 2023, if that's okay? So the grant, the RTP grant that I mentioned, we got awarded, so we'll be implementing that this year. There's a $5,000 match, but we plan to do all that within kind labor like we did the last time. And the people that worked on it last time plan to work on it this time, so I don't think that'll be a problem, uh, being able to get the match. Again, through these volunteers, you know, mow the trails, you know, a couple times throughout the season. There's a culvert at Mount Huggins, so Mount Huggins is on the Cheshire Trail, and I don't know, somebody said 20, 30 years ago, they rerouted the drainage off Mount Huggins, and it drains onto the trail now, so we wanna fix that. Joe's been involved, it was gonna be part of the RTP grant, but we didn't get all the money, so I was gonna, hopefully with some of the extra money we're asking for here, we'll be able to get the culvert, and Joe will get his crew out there, and he can be able to fix that. So, we're hoping to do that. Uh, another thing is, uh, when we look at the trail closely, well, let me back up, the tap grant isn't gonna fix everything. It was supposed to when we started, but money seems to just kind of disappear with these federal grants. So we looked at the trail close and there aren't.
Money doesn't disappear, that sounds.
Well.
Nefarious.
Reallocated.
Doesn't go as.
It gets real allocated.
No, we've gotten more than we were, I mean, with inflation factors, we're getting more than we initially applied for, it doesn't go as far as.
It doesn't, it's not going as far as we originally were at hope to get. Um, so there's places on the trail where the original railroad bent material's still there, but it's been pushed off by the snowmobilers and the groomers, and so Bruce and I were out there, and we got this idea of how we can get it back onto the trail and get it, and therefore we can get more trail surface fixed, so we're gonna try to do that this year through renting some equipment and that type of thing, so that's another.
What type of material is it? What is the material?
It's a, it's that black.
Cinders, I think.
Cinder, cinder material, it's a real fine black-looking material that actually does pack down pretty well, and it, I've seen it on other sections of the trail.
Used up in the running tracks. Oh, yeah, cinders.
There's a guy in Westmoreland that's doing it, that's another place where I got the idea, he's actually doing that and being successful with it. Um, let me see, so, oh, signage, well, I don't know, maybe you could help, but it depends if the state ever approves the document and the signage guideline, um, so that's why that's a big maybe, don't know. But if that comes through, then maybe we can then start buying signs and getting signs up. And in that document is things like just safety signs, wayfinding signs, uh, permit, you know, who's allowed on the trail, keep your dog on a leash sign, you know, that kind of stuff, the speed limit, you know, those kind of things. Uh, continue keeping the leaves and stuff out of the ditches, so the water stays into ditches and doesn't get on the trail. There's a culvert behind the Brown Farm on Ashweelot Trail that's got a hole in it, it's literally on the surface. So we're, we want to get that fixed this year as well. Again, the tap grant, well, we'll see how far it goes this year, I'm not sure, and we continue to provide brochures and businesses and kiosks and things like that. So that's the plan this year, as far as the budget. Um, so we've got, you know, Beverly does all, all our meeting minutes, so that's the part-time salaries, and we'll cover her. The equipment rentals are some of this extra stuff we wanna do, try to, you know, reclaim some of the surface material, try to fix the culvert on Mount Huggins, uh, you know, that kind of stuff, so do that work. The trail maintenance line item is to cover any of the reimbursement to volunteers, uh, whether it's fuel, you know, fixing equipment, you know, that type of thing. Uh, and then the printing, publishing, copying, that's the brochures, rack cards, uh, maybe making a banner, like we plan to be part of Earth Day, Donnie Keen, so we might make a banner for that, to publicize more our trails and things like that, so. That's kind of the plan with all the budget there.
And this is one where, don't look at department versus admin, cuz I don't know what happened when I entered it the first time, but just look at the admin column, so there's some. Don't look at the department column.
Don't.
It'll just confuse you. But we don't have, uh, severe disagreements like it looks like if you look at.
But. Did you take 2,000? From trail maintenance and put it up in equipment rental, or no? Or is, just disregard the whole administrator?
No, you, yeah, use the administrator, the administrator line is.
2023 administrator column, right?
Correct.
It's what I was.
Yeah, don't look at the department column.
So this.
So this, the administrator.
$2,000 increase.
It's a $2,000 increase.
Right, basically, moving, moving some from trail maintenance to.
Gotcha.
Equipment rental. To rent equipment to do trail maintenance.
Right, but it's not 48 and a half percent.
Well, it is, but it's, it's only, it equates to 2,400 bucks. Cuz the whole budget was 5,000 last year.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So it's an increase of 2,000.
Yeah, I got you.
Any questions?
Yeah, just on, on the budget, are there, are there invoices coming in for November, December?
That excavator we rented in November, that's not accounted for yet. Couple reimbursements aren't accounted for yet. I'm expecting about 1,200 to be left over, cuz that mower that failed, they're gonna, they're gonna credit us. And that's why we didn't spend the whole budget, we would've if that mower had failed and we were able to use it for that.
Well, with regard to the trail maintenance, do you anticipate that you'll use the full amount, will, will the full amount have been used when all the invoices are in?
No, I think we're gonna be 1,200 short of using the whole budget, because that mower, which we were renting was.
That's on that line item.
That's on that one.
All right, so, cutting it, I'm having a hard time seeing them, but it looks like.
You don't have the bigger ones right there.
Oh, which one, this one here? Well, no, it's this one.
Yeah, it's kind of in the, in the middle-ish.
This one work for ya?
Oh, yeah, that's perfect. To think I went through the surgery for this. Yeah, I wish, I'll find out next month. All right, so, where I'm, really where I'm going with it is, you're, you're gonna use 2,800 out of the 4,000? And we're, we're targeting to reduce that? Is, is maintenance gonna become less expensive?
No, I, so the, the equipment rental line, we bumped up, and that's where the equipment rental then would be accounted for.
Okay, so that's gonna, that's where the differential is?
Yeah, when we, yes.
Okay. Thanks. Oops.
That's got all those answers on it, we can't take that.
Any other questions or comments?
What are the man-made hazards that you refer to? What, what's an example of a man-made hazard?
Man-made hazard?
On the trail?
Yeah.
Oh, on the trail?
You listed as one of your high-level goals, address man-made hazards.
Oh, oh, yeah, if they occur. Um, I can't really think of anything right offhand.
Debris, if somebody dumps a bunch of, a couch or something.
I guess if somebody dumps trash or the washer dryer, you know, I mean, those have happened, like there's a washer and dryer over the side of the trail on the Cheshire Trail right now, we don't even know how to get it out, it's so far down the hill. But if somebody dumps something like that onto the trail, we gotta get rid of it, so that can be a man-made hazard, you know? Uh, if you recall, when Burnger Automotive was still there, we did a big clearing, that was about three years ago. We pulled out under tires and mattresses and, I guess those are man-made hazards, right? That kind of stuff. The dumping seems to get less, or it's getting smaller, the Bud Light can is the winner for the most debris on the trail uh, by far every year, but it's usually cans, bottles, right now I haven't seen anything real big recently. Right now, I haven't seen anything real big recently. But that kind of stuff could, could happen. And part of this whole project, part of these plans is the gates where they, you know, the DOT puts up gates. Well, a lot of times people can get around the gates. So we're planning to block the gate bypasses, I call them. That would help also reduce motorized vehicles getting on the trail. And that's where the dumping occurs. Someone drives up with their truck to get on there. And I've seen everything on the trail. Four-wheelers, four-by-four trucks, dirt bikes, you know, you name it.
Are you seeing activity up in general pedestrian bicyclists?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, and I think when, on the Cheshire Trail, when Keen gets the bridge over 101, so if you're not aware, they're planning to put a bridge over 101 at the Stone Arch Bridge and a, and a bridge over Swansea Factory Road. They have a project, they're working on that. I think when that occurs, now you have a link. I, I've been on the trail, I was on the trailer one day and there was a couple of guys walking and I stopped to chat with them. I go, where'd you start? They go, at the beginning. Well, I know this trail goes like to Winchton and it goes, you know, where, what do you mean beginning? Oh, right there at 101. So they, they didn't even know the trail went to Keen. They got on at the Stone Arch Bridge and just walked south, right? Because it's so overgrown. I think once that's in, we're going to see a lot of more traffic. And the storage company across from the Cheshire Fairgrounds is part of their plan. And they did, they put in a couple of small parking lots for the trail users. So we could help promote, you know, park there. And now that they want to ride into Keen, right, they're going through Swansea.
Sure.
Or, I mean, there's vision someday. In fact, you said, where can you help? Maybe one place is just north of the Nissan dealer. On the east side of the road, there's, there's a, an open, big open, it looks like a parking area. They did some logging there last year. That would be a great trailhead, right? I don't know who owns the property. It's already cleared for parking. There's already a path that goes up to the Cheshire Trail. If we could get ahold of the owner, find out if they give us an easement or something, and then we can help fix it and then make that a destined, you know, parking place that people could park and that's where they can get on the trail. Because along the Cheshire Trail, there's, there's only a few spots that there's access to the trail. So the more access we can get, I think the better.
Sure. Yeah, we can work on that. Thanks very much.
Sure, thank you.
Please thank your committee for us.
Oh, sure.
Doing a heck of a lot of work.
Have a happy new year.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike. Chief Gould, how we doing? Now I'm gonna wish I'd brought my color copies, I know. They're sitting right at my desk.
What do you have for us, chief?
Oh, I have, um, an updated proposal for, um, staffing for this coming year. With help of Michael, Julius, uh, come up with another plan we think that, that can be beneficial to the department. And more importantly, to the response out there to the, the community. So, um, you know, we're going to maintain our coverage by our full-time and regular part-time workers. And we're looking to increase from five to 10. Um, coverage in the station by part-time or per diem personnel. So it's an increase of five hours. And the paid-on-call hours would be covered by members that would be paid by, $5 an hour as an incentive to remain available to respond initially on the call. And, um, that will give us 24 hours coverage for the week, five-day week. And then on the weekends, we continue, uh, actually, we'd extend our, our per diem coverage, Saturdays, Sundays to a 12-hour shift. From eight to four, now we'll increase to eight to eight. And those hours, uh, remaining hours of the day would be uncovered. They'd be voluntary on-call like, uh, like most of the time right now. So, uh, it, it's significant, um, increase in hourly or hours covered. So, um, total 145 hours a week that are covered. And leaves us 24 hours that are not dedicated covered, but still can, obviously, members can still respond in a timely fashion. Which is, uh, in comparison, as of, like, right now, it's only 61 hours that are, that are dedicated covered. So it significantly increases our, our coverage.
So would, would these, uh, this would be scheduled? Those people, people would know?
Yeah, so it'd be predetermined, pre-scheduled, yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, would you, uh, consider doing the paid-on-call for the, the whole 83 hours a week instead of additional part-time? Ryan?
On the weeknights?
Yeah.
Um, well, that's, that's a, could be a consideration, but, um, we, we figure those are some of our busiest times between five and 10. So we have somebody right there in the station, figure that'd be a, a better coverage, better, um, deliver service, I guess.
It's just, I don't, I mean, we're talking about $87,000 this year and every year going forward, we're never going to see a new fire station. Or, or a truck. I mean, it's just.
Yeah, I mean, it's, but it, you know, we still have to, we still have to be, do our, our due diligence and have people available to respond, you know, so.
Well, I'm also thinking back to what Kenneth said, that, you know, we need to tell people that if they're going to be on the fire department, they need to respond to calls.
That's, it's true, but again, you know, we can revisit that, but in the, the climate that we are in today, if you will, that, you know, as far as obligation goes, people are required to meet their obligation, but it doesn't always get met. This would guarantee people that would be, uh, in, on duty at the time to respond. Uh, there's times where we can get many people out and there's other times we can't.
I think our first choice would be persuasion and encouragement, like you said, and make it voluntary. And then if people aren't picking it up, I mean, we talked about, maybe it's something where we amend the call pay policy and kind of roughly figure out, you know, okay, someone has to do two days a month or, you know, I don't think it would end up being really that many if they relatively evenly split it up.
What do we have right now, weekdays for full-time and part-time employees? What does that come out to? You know, number personnel and?
So right now, technically on the, on the books, if you would, if you will, we only have two full-time, two part-time.
The two part-time total 40 hours between the two of them. But their budget.
So 20 hours a week? But 20 hours apiece for the part-timers?
For simplicity, yeah. It's, I think, 32 and 8, but between the two.
And there's nobody else that is during the weekday? There's nobody else being paid during the weekday to be on?
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring people in. Uh, we have two designated part-timers, but that are budgeted, but we're bringing our people in that comes out of call.
Cover vacations, sick time. But the part-time wages, it's budgeted at the 40 hours between the two.
20 hours apiece or whoever comes to.
Julius, would you want to, Julius is on Zoom, uh, would you want to run the numbers on that? That slide I was talking about, paid-on-call from, from 5 to 8 a.m., just to see what cost difference that looks like?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
So I, I just ran those numbers right now and what I'm seeing is that the total cost is about, uh, and we're talking from the, the previous one is the 96,000. If you were going to calculate it with the, um, weekly, um, part-time or, uh, per diem employees removed, it equates to about 59,000. So you're seeing roughly a, if you round the 96 up to 100 and you're rounding the 59 up to 60, so about a 40,000 difference.
So that'd be paid-on-call the weeknights from 5 to 8?
Correct. Yeah, that's calculating at the $5 an hour that they're, they're called. Uh, we do obviously have to anticipate that whenever you get or receive a call during those times, you will have to pay the part-time rate, of course, whenever they're, they're called in. Uh, but what, I think what we'll experience is, is during that timeframe is whenever we expect the most calls anyways. Uh, so I, I think we were going to run those numbers, you know, say, next year or the year after. If this method was approved, you'd find that, that, that period's going to have the most part-time anyways.
So that would get it down, you know, 35, 40,000, still providing significantly more coverage. It does put more strain on the, on the on-call aspect, but kind of a, somewhere in the middle.
Where would they be based?
So the paid-on-call would just, you're just home and you're saying, you're, you're home or in the area and you're just saying basically you're available. So they'd just be at home. The covered part, the, the coverage by part-time per diem would be based in the station, probably usually three, but, um, you know, at times I know like the weekend per diems, they go to the different stations, fill up the, fill up the trucks, make sure everything's clean and ready to go. So they kind of move around, I think, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the paid-on-call, especially overnight, you imagine that means you're home, you're available, um, but not, not actually physically on-site, which is how you get away from not having to pay a minimum wage because they're just available to come in. And then if they get called in, they get their normal rate.
If I may chime in with a little bit more sense on this one, is these numbers, especially the $5 an hour rate, was drafted using Jeffrey's model. And we also took, uh, the same modeling of times, not time of days, following the models of New Boston as well. I've reached out to their fire chief there. So we've had extensive conversation with individuals that are in the same situation. And we found that they've had a lot more success by offering the paid rates because it, it incentivizes the individual to be, uh, more ready than just an individual that's just on-call. So it kind of keeps that method of voluntary on-call, uh, but it gives that extra level incentive to ensure that we have the service.
Do you have a question?
No.
No. Uh, one of the, the approaches I thought we were looking at was just a flat fee of 50, $50 per period. I was saying, one, one of the firefighters had mentioned, I, I've forgotten whether it was $100 or $200 a week that they got to, to be on-call for, for the job that they were in. So anyway, I, I thought we were taking a look at that method.
Basically comes up to the same amount, the 10 hours at $5 an hour. I think that's kind of where we somewhat got that ballpark number.
So I, I came out with 35, 36,400. So how, and then that's substantially different than 87,000.
87 includes, 80, the 87, well.
Because it includes.
That includes the part-time per diem from 5 to 10 and extending the weekend.
No, I, I get, I get that. I, I thought, I thought we basically were going to have the, the, what's existing and then all the white area was essentially going to be covered, $50 per person per day, which that's, that was a, when, when I embraced it, that's what I thought we were looking at. And obviously, that's different than, than what this is substantially, certainly from a financial perspective.
But I think that's similar to a number that Julius just cited was more along the approach that you're talking about.
Okay, I just didn't quite gather it all. I didn't embrace it all. It didn't all soak in. Well, anyway, looking, looking at it this way, that, that's a, I agree with Sly. That's a pretty, pretty steep number. So I think, I think we're going to have to really decide if that's the, the right approach. And do we want to do it? Because it's, it's essentially adding a, a full-time person.
But I think if you look at.
In terms of dollars.
You're going from 61 hours of coverage to 144. Again, not, not diminishing the cost, but I think that's a pretty good return on the investment. But, I mean, the chief, you, the board tasked the chief with, um, coming back with some additional options to provide coverage without full-time staff. That's what this is. Might, it's not set in stone, certainly willing to, willing to be, uh, to be tweaked, but it was just one idea, weekend workshop. So obviously, you know, any, any, any more coverage is progress and hopefully will mean more, more response, which is what, what we're ultimately going for. And the board's more comfortable coming up, coming back with a cost number or, you know, the 35, um, or, you know, whatever amount you think you can live with and then develop off that. We could do that, too. The thought behind not doing a paid call on the weekend nights was the thought that people are generally, you know, most people aren't working, so there might be a higher, um, higher response rate for just catch-as-catch-can, kind of the voluntary on-call, what we're calling it. So that's why we didn't include that coverage on those, on those nights. But we could certainly do more of the, more of the on-call and less of the part-time per diem. I think that was partly just based on call volume. It's just that next block was another, um, time where we see more calls than after that. That really dropped off after the nine, 10 o'clock. But none of the times are, are set in stone. It's just kind of workshopped.
I'd, I'd personally like a chance to, I didn't see this till today, so to take a, a deeper look at it.
Yeah, and that's why we wanted to give it, get, at least get it initially presented today so you have some time to, uh, continue to review it and then like to try to at least have an idea where we're going going into the budget hearing, so we're not still making the sausage at that point if we can, so. And we can have Julius draw up that, um, proposal that Sly was mentioning.
Well, that and, uh, do the paid-on-call for each day. And eliminate the per diems on the weekends and see what, $50 per person. So $100 a day comes out to in comparison.
So you lost me there, so.
Eliminate the yellow on Saturday and Sunday and the white and do the pink paid-on-call for the whole, all day Saturday, all day Sunday, and then weeknights.
So the flat 50 would be the same for an overnight as it would be a full 24-hour period?
Yeah.
And it's just a flat 50?
Because again, they're more apt to be at home for the weekends anyway.
Yeah, I don't.
Be tied to working so much.
That program is working pretty well. What it is, and we have people that come in, that work the per diem, that don't live close. Um, but, um, so we rely on them. That would work for those particular people. And on weekends, especially even, you know, spring and summer, I don't know if that would be the best option. Probably wouldn't get too many people to do that if we had people working that are on shift. That's obviously, you know, that's a priority.
Well, we'd need to see the numbers, too, as far as how many calls and whatnot, you know? How often is that filled? Do you have, is it every shift is filled on the weekends or?
Yeah, for most, probably 90, 95%. There's a few, a few shifts that go uncovered.
Couple of times you had one.
Yeah, we'll have. Yeah, we'll have, we'll run, we'll run one, experiment person will run. We don't like to do that, but.
Okay, anyone have anything else? Ken? Thanks, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your work on this. Thank you.
Do you want to go back to, uh, number, the letter A for the energy commission?
Yeah.
You want to go ahead? I'll make the motion to appoint Dennis Swain as a member of the energy commission with a term ending at town meeting twenty-twenty-four.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Dennis. Thanks for volunteering. Julius is available. Julius, you're up.
Yeah, I apologize about making you argue with the computer on this one, but, uh, obviously I, I can't be there now. So in front of you, I believe you have a relatively extensive chart. This breaks down a lot of the questions that we had at the last meeting about the, uh, solar exemptions, potentially about who might own their systems, who are potentially, uh, leasing their systems currently, uh, if they've aged out, which means they've either bought their rental unit or, um, their lease ended. Uh, also calculated at the forty percent that Sly had mentioned at the last meeting as well. And you'll notice that out of all this, out of this entire list, there was three properties, as we discussed, that, um, were, that actually reached the thirty-five thousand cap. And then out of those three, there was only one where there would be, say, a negative deficit, and I use air quotes on the negative portion, if there was a forty percent limitation on it. Uh, we did a little bit of research into the property and, and determined that the reason why is, is really it's a residential unit. They purchased the system themselves. They prioritized it. It's a off, actually the side of the structure itself. If, if I, uh, pictured that correctly and, uh, uh, it is used as a primary source for the home. So yeah, that, that's kind of the gist of it. The hopes is to continue the same discussion that we had last week. Also, you know, posing with these answers and, and really trying to, uh, to determine if we think that, uh, the forty percent is still needed or if we should just make that transition into the hundred percent.
So again, I guess my point really is on the value of the property and that if the subject property you mentioned was going to be for sale, it would probably be the seventy-five thousand dollar solar assessment would probably factor into a good part of the sale of the property.
Yeah, I, I should also, I'm going to put a caveat on this property as, as well as I had a conversation, uh, with the assessor and Christine about this piece, and he said that he intends to actually, uh, make an alteration to that piece and assess it at a, at a lower fifty thousand. He said that's during his input process. He had put it in the wrong column. So when we pulled this out, it actually should be fifty, not seventy-five. But that still puts it above the cap, so it doesn't holistically change the, uh, the discussion here. I mean, yes, if they were to sell the property and send it to another individual, it would still be assessed at that rate until it makes a determinable change based on its value. Now, I was asked by a, a resident, and I, I can't obviously tell if they're in the room right now at the last meeting, uh, to inquire about the, uh, inclusion of batteries into this because batteries are relatively extensive piece. Uh, and I did not have the chance to, to ask the assessor specifically about those. Uh, but from what I had a conversation with Christine about this, she said that, uh, from what she has talked to the assessor about, they are included in the piece because it's all one functionary topic. So I think that should cover most of the questions that we had discussed last time.
I don't know if the batteries would be, I don't think they'd be considered separate real property that would be assessed.
Right, but their life, their life assess, their life, uh, cycle isn't going to be as long as the panel itself, so.
Yeah, correct.
It'll go five or ten years before they have to replace batteries, so. Yeah, I'd be interested in the assessor just assessing the property of what he thinks it's worth. And if, if the solar panels factor into it, into increasing the value of the property, I'd still like to see somewhere around forty percent. I could go higher, I guess, but.
So I, I, again, talking to Christine about that, she did say, and you can see it in the car tools here, that the solar panel is, uh, counted as an increase to the value of the property. Uh, and that's why you do see that in the assessment call, it says assessment without solar, they all decrease there. Uh, they're all a net positive in that sense, but I think that's exactly it, is that you will see, um, you'll see a substantive change in the coming years and decrease in the value of these things as you go. It's because you're right, they have that, uh, degratory nature to them, just because they don't last as long.
I wasn't sure that was Sly's. Was that your question?
Well, kind of. It's, I'm just trying to make it fair as far as the fact that if, if somebody puts in a seventy-five thousand dollar solar array on a minimal property and because of inflation and everything else, that solar array ends up being worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars when they go to sell the property, plus the cost of the property, what difference is that? And then somebody buying a house, fixing it up and selling it for a profit, it's still real value property, real estate, and unfortunately, that's the way our taxes work. It's based on the value of the property. That's what I meant.
That's what I thought you meant. I wasn't figuring the inflation because I think it goes the other way, but.
May or may not.
Correct. Do, when you were talking with Dave, do, do we have a sense of whether the market value is adjusted one way or the other when, when properties are conveyed with solar? So I, I, I bring that up in, in response to the question I, I mentioned last week that I haven't done residential for a while, but when I did, it was more of a detriment than it was a positive. It was a positive to the seller, but the buyer didn't want to pay for it. So do, do appraisers and assessors put, put that value, increased value on a property?
Yeah, so when I had that conversation with Christine about the methods that, uh, Dave uses to, uh, add a value to these, to these particular units, the calculations and you'll have to excuse me for maybe my not, my, my not clear knowledge on this particular case, but it values anything from the number of wattage that it might produce, how much might be stored, uh, and then actual cost of the physical structure itself at that given time. And so factoring in all those different materials is how you get that rate. So given that, let's say, that time period that you're talking about, you know, a couple of years down the road, if the cost of electricity goes up, that would mean the value of the device goes up because the, the wattage that it gives or how much it can store. So I think that's where it becomes very variable, uh, and the equation is, I guess in the scenario, appraisers will look at it in that sense. Does that answer the question? I, I hope I hit that target.
Yeah, it, it does. I think we're getting so far into the weeds on it that it, it really for me begs the question of why it's just not a complete wash. Costs fifty thousand to put in. If he assesses it at fifty thousand, then the fifty thousand comes off. I think otherwise, I, I know I'm not knowledgeable enough to pick a percentage.
Well.
That's not directed at anybody. It's just, just a general comment.
I know. This is the same thing I'm struggling with. That's why, you know, the thirty-five thousand dollar limit doesn't work only because of hyperinflation. So if somebody has a four hundred thousand dollar house, they put a hundred thousand dollar solar system in, yeah, they, they should get the same exemption, but that's twenty-five percent of the value of the house, so. But if they have a four hundred thousand dollar house and they put a four hundred thousand dollar solar system in, does that house become worth nothing? Or is it worth eight hundred thousand dollars? Or somewhere in between four and eight? You know, I, I don't know.
I just don't want to be the one buying it when it's time to recycle them.
Oh, I know.
And figure out where, where are you going to get rid of them? Yeah. Yeah, it's a. Where, where are we in the mix? Uh, in terms of what we have for evaluation on this, the, the thirty-five thousand dollar cap, where, where are we?
Some of none, right?
Compared to other communities? Yeah, I think we had that last week. I don't have that, um, sheet handy, but I mean, I think, I think it varies significantly. It's kind of like, you know, when we talk about, we're going to do for, uh, cost of living increases, it's varies so much that I don't know that the comparison is, is that useful. But I can, we can get something more definitive on, but I think it varies significantly from town to town. But I do think more are just going with a hundred percent.
That's why I was, my, my question was going to be of, are we in the minority, a significant minority by having a cap? There's got to be other people certainly smarter than me.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll I'll cruise around to try to find the, that same link that I referenced at the, at the last week's meeting. But I think what we're finding is that initial exemptions, uh, usually started at somewhere around the, uh, the thirty-five range. And that's why you guys instituted it previously. But with change, I think that's more recently, those communities that started with a thirty-five have shifted to a hundred, only because, hundred percent, I mean, because they're not entirely sure on how, uh, each one of these is going to be impacted accordingly because of inflation. So we're starting to see a substantial change or increase, and I'll pull those numbers right now if you'll give me a second. Well, unless Mike beats me to it first.
Unlikely.
Okay, so we'll push this off till next week?
Yes.
Okay. Let's, let's just skip ahead for a second, um, to accept the unanticipated funds.
I believe Beverly has that list.
I do.
Is that what you handed out also from Teresa or?
Yes, correct.
Okay. We have that somewhere. There they are. I'll make the motion to accept the funds as you have them. Woodcomb Hall miscellaneous revenue four hundred. FEMA grant funds, thirty thousand one sixty-seven eleven. FEMA grant funds, four thousand one fifty-two ninety-seven. Cemetery trust fund, five hundred. One-time state revenues, nineteen thousand three fifty-nine twenty-six. ARPA funds, eight seventy-five and fifty-nine ninety-five for digital fish scale.
Yeah, I think a couple, a couple of the larger ones, we're going to actually end up having the public hearing in January. But I think that list for this purposes, what Beverly has will be, will, will work.
Are you including the fishing derby?
Yep, he lumped it in. He's going crazy. He's doing them both.
Fifty-nine ninety-five.
Okay, that one. Okay, thank you.
All in favor, Sly? Thanks, thanks, Beverly.
You're welcome.
Twenty-twenty-one carpenter home withdrawal.
We're tabled until next week.
Okay. All right, time to review the warrant. Those will all be conveniently removed.
Typos? Or removed before you, before they get to you, mostly, uh, mostly canned language, so.
Can we put the current, uh, the additions or increases in parentheses so it looks like a negative number?
You can try.
Michael, how many, uh, warrant articles are there total?
Twelve.
Counting officers, old business, or another business is twelve right now.
Twelve, thank you.
Michael, you had a chance to review nine to ten.
I think you have to do a separate one for the all veterans and the optional veterans is what, um, is what DRA advised us, so.
Yeah, they, they, they don't find me and I do appreciate it. And I will pass this on to the EAG.
Thank you.
I'm going to do better about the time after this. I got some angry phone calls.
Oh, jeez. Tell them we're already on top of it.
Yeah, uh, they weren't so about town because town ended up doing this. It was
The state?
It was the state. Most of these guys are all considered Republicans and it's the Republicans that did this crap.
Yeah, I don't, I really don't understand. Maybe you understand. What were they trying to, had they modified something, but?
Well, I think what's happened, some of the municipalities don't want to give off credit. They don't, their budgets are stopped. I know when we lived in Gelse, well, my wife and I lived in Gelse for a time. They told her she couldn't have this. She didn't, they didn't do that in Gelse, despite the state law that said officially for them. And that's my, yeah, it's, you know.
Hey, Mike, if you want me to record this, I cannot hear Mike York.
Okay, we're just speculating.
Yeah, and I'm really surprised if the governor actually signed this. In fact, I'm crafting letters for him now. I'm also a Republican convention member, where I get to vote for our leaders to space here. So I am making a complaint to him with this kind of behavior, if he wants to remain on public as far as I'm concerned, as I warned him. It was actually, it's some legislation he's trying to propose to take away some of the towns, the municipalities' land rights. In other words, take away what we can do as a zoning board and a planning board and have the state regulate everything. Trying to move in that direction, we can see.
Well, I think this actually fits into the same thing because what you're saying is this is local control.
Right.
So if the town meeting one year votes to authorize the veterans' credit, that doesn't mean it's good forever. The next town meeting.
I don't know if it means.
They don't have to get sixty percent, right?
If it has to be authorized in a year.
I think that's probably going to be it. I don't know.
And what I think, and I hope is that some towns will forget about it. Because not every town has an act of legion. You've got, like, Gelsons and, uh, and the Richmond's and I don't know how choice acted it right now. But you get those towns, I don't even know if Orange is Legion, Oklahoma, so.
We'll, we'll, we'll let you save that conversation for later. We're going to
Okay.
get back on our agenda, but the, the good news is it's.
The good news is that those look good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, um, you, you had a memo that I can't find, ha- having to do with percentage increase.
Page thirty-two in your packet.
Yeah, unfortunately.
You took the staple out and it's all gone. Yeah, I got it.
Okay, so it's page thirty-two?
Should've been right after the warrant.
You know, I found that all right. Any, do you want to go back? Do you want to just go through that?
Well, just before, was there anything that, other than, you know, ones we discussed or things that we know are still pending? Was there anything, um, the opposite of solar, I guess, that was still pending? Um, anything glaringly missing or on there that's offensive or?
Injurious, obnoxious, or offensive?
No.
I thought it looked good. Like Sly had said, other than some typos maybe.
There are typos? You have to send me your.
Other than that five hundred dollar credit, I know you meant five dollar.
Oh, no, jeez. You're trying to get me in trouble with a legion again. So yeah, built up all of your, um, requests. Yeah, one of the, one of the last things we typically insert into the budget is, employee wage increases, both merit and or cost of living, depending on, um, you know, what we're looking at for cost of living. We typically, not necessarily followed, but at least referred to, um, the social security inflationary factor and then a two-point-five percent, um, the budget for the average based on their increases. Some, uh, employees that are doing stellar might get more, some, um, energy improvement might get less, but, um, that's usually typically averaged about four percent. that's usually typically averaged about four percent. Last year, we were kind of seeing the beginnings of some of the, uh, inflationary challenges that have only obviously gotten worse this year. Uh, last year, social security increased five point nine percent. Our total increase that we settled on was, uh, five point five. This year, social security is increasing eight point seven percent, so even more, even higher than last year. Each percentage of overall wage increase roughly equates to about thirty-three thousand, spread between, um, both the department budget where the wages are and then various, uh, fringe benefits. So I, I don't necessarily have, have a magic number or proposal. I've tried to spend, as you can imagine, kind of a popular, um, discussion topic, and it really varies widely. I've seen anywhere from two percent to eight point seven percent. Um, Peterborough, I'd done a little survey of surrounding towns, which I can hand out, but it just kind of confirms, kind of what we have already kind of, what I've already mentioned, you know, Bo, five percent, but then two point five for merit, Brentwood, eight point seven, Branson, eight point six, Hancock, eight point seven, Jaffrey, three to five, or one to three for merit, eleven and three and three, Milford, seven, Boston, three for cost of living, four for merit, Northfield, eight. Some towns that have collective bargaining agreements, in this case, those are kind of beneficial if you lock them at two percent per year or three percent. Um, that's kind of tamping some of those down. I'm sure they'll try to get their, um, get their share back after that, when the next, next agreement factors in. Obviously, it's not a factor for us, but, um, so again, I don't, I don't have a, I don't envy the, I don't envy the decision. It's not an easy one. You know, we know the, we know the merits of retention, um, and avoiding, avoiding having to replace people. You know, a few, a few replacements really kind of are, are significant costs versus, you know, spending the money on the front end. But again, we don't have an unlimited pocket, as you know, so, um, again, I don't, I don't necessarily have a magic number. I'd look to the board for, um, guidance or questions or thoughts.
I'm good with your proposal.
I didn't make, I didn't make one.
Yeah. Two percent?
He said two percent.
Yeah, you said the board settled on the.
That was last year.
It says December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two.
No, so that's the date of the memo, and then I said.
Oh, last year's memo.
Last year's memo started, and the board settled on five point five.
Answer the question. What do you suggest?
Which was less than the inflationary factor alone last year, so I think that's at least a starting point, but we've, the board has been very proactive and very appreciative of, um, employees, which has been appreciated. And we've kind of caught up where we had fallen behind, and I think that's kind of borne out in terms of, you know, we have one police vacancy, whereas Winchester probably has two police officers total, or Keane has several vacancies. So I hate, I hate to see us fall behind again, but again, I understand we don't have, um, yeah, we can't have an unlimited budget increase either, so.
It seemed to me that, without doing the math, it, it, there was about an average of seven percent increase over the, the primary budgets. Uh, police was a little bit lower, some of the others a little bit higher, but basically seven percent. And I'd, I'd be comfortable with that.
So I think that's, I think that's reasonable. It, it doesn't sound reasonable, but I think it is reasonable.
Once you work your magic, it'll look real reasonable.
But anyway, that's, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, it's the environment we're in. If only we had invested wisely.
Getting better interest rates now.
I would agree with that. How would you like to split it?
I think the two point five that we've done for merit, I think that should remain consistent. So then the rest, cost of living, so five, or four and a half, um, cost of living and five, or two point five merit.
Yeah. Consensus?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, thank you. The last of the miscellaneous, uh, budgets.
Yep.
You saw those?
I don't know the acronyms well, so.
It says after each one, if you look at the summary, it says notes to department.
Oh, down there, yeah.
So FA is financial administration. Looking at a, a glorious point nine four percent increase, mainly just, uh, shifting around between software support and CPA, payroll services, or audit.
So is the, the only question I, just in general. Previously, the items in parentheses were an increase, but, but now they're decreasing.
A reasonable question.
Is Julius factored in on the full time?
Yes, under the planning and community development department.
What, what are our plans for the building on Pine Street?
Largely to con, I know we've talked about trying to do some touch night things, but largely to continue to use it for cold storage. It's enormously valuable. But I have some ideas of sprucing.
It would be nice to be one of the nicer properties.
I think it's the median.
It's, it, well, do, do we have any thoughts with regard to that?
Love to hear what you're thinking.
Do we?
No, not really. I mean, no, seriously.
It was, it was a benefit to take that deck off, for sure. And what are we doing about the mobile home behind it?
What would you like to do?
The one out in the woods is gone, right? Where we have the garage now for DPW?
Is that one there?
The long one?
Oh, there's one.
The long driveway?
The long driveway, there's one at, one, one, there's one there, and then there's the garage behind it.
Garage, I believe they're using.
BPW is using the garage, but. The mobile home went away, no?
I haven't looked at it for a month or so, but, oh.
I think we were still within the redemption period for that one, but I think that's past now, so we can now dispose of it.
Okay, that would be good. Anybody have any questions on any of these?
No, Ken.
And then, so obviously, we've been kind of eating the elephant one bite at a time, but, um, they've sent out the summary as well. And, um, actually, all things considered, you know, a four-point-one percent increase, again, without the wage increases, which we just talked about, so that'll increase it, but I think in this environment, that's, that's pretty reasonable.
We added a million dollars worth of taxable property. I think I asked you that last year.
Have we added a million?
Yeah, I think so, right? Aren't those, the new development, the new houses, aren't they coming on this year?
Yes. Then we'll do our statistical update one more year, twenty-twenty-four, so, and the rate will plummet. You'll all be heroes. Right in time, right in time for your, uh, chairmanship there, boss.
Anything else?
Sayonara. Tough year to try and get a bond for schools.
Yeah.
I think it's a good year to kick off.
Yeah, anything else?
Yeah, we look back, we got the, uh, new business one. Oh, uh, just make note of it, because it's something we usually try to go to, but I don't think, unless we wanted to change our schedule for next week, is the letter from Keane. Unless you want to try to modify our schedule, I'll send our appreciation and regrets.
Legislative invite. Yeah, it's a good, good program to go to, but it's unfortunate, it's.
They didn't consult with us? So, all right, I'll send it to Elizabeth and.
You never know, hopefully. Hopefully.
It's a good experience.
And you missed our meeting? And missed our meeting?
I would suggest we make the offer of designating you as our representative.
There you go. You want to go for us?
Not that you need another meeting.
We'll send Julius and Sarah. I said we'll send Julius and Sarah.
We have any non-publics?
No.
Anything else?
Don't think so. What's on the list?
Motion to adjourn.
Other years successful, I'm in the books.
All in favor?
Aye.